All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I call to order this regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council. Deputy Clerk McDowell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Volin.
Here.
Sims, I will note, is virtual. Scambalary.
Here.
Sandberg.
Here.
Rallo.
Here.
Flaherty, also virtual. And Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, continuing with the agenda summation, we have one set of minutes to approve this evening from January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, right in its regular session. We'll then move into reports, where we will have reports from council members, a report from the mayor and city offices, specifically a housing report from the Hand Department, reports from council committees, if any, and then that will bring us to our first of two periods of public comment for items not on our legislative agenda this evening. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions, and then move into legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is Resolution two thousand and thirty-nine to approve the interlocal agreement between Monroe County, the town of Ellisville, and the City of Bloomington for animal shelter operation for the year two thousand and twenty-four. Also included there is Resolution two thousand and thirty-two to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, regarding building code authority. Resolution two thousand and thirty-one to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, Indiana, in regards to the two thousand and twenty-four Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Then finally, in that section, we'll take up Resolution two thousand and thirty-two to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, for the operation of the Bloomington Monroe County Capital Improvement Board and the Convention and Visitors Commission. We'll then move into legislation for first readings. We have two pieces of legislation there. The first is Ordinance two thousand and thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana, of certain extensions and improvements to the city's sewage works utility, the issuance of, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment and costs, of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works and other related matters. We also have Ordinance two thousand and thirty-three, an ordinance concerning the construction of additions and improvements to the waterworks of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, the issue of revenue bonds to provide the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said waterworks, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said revenue bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of bonds, and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. We'll then come to our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we will adjourn. So with that, let's move, oh, I'm sorry, and I'll ask Council Vice President Piedmont Smith to read our land and labor acknowledgement to start us.
We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity.
Thank you, Vice President Piedmont Smith. That takes us to our approval of minutes.
Madam President, has I moved the approval of a regular session minutes from January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, just to, by way of information for the public, when we have members participating virtually, all voice, all votes are roll-call votes. So we will not be doing ayes and nays, we'll be doing roll-call votes. So with that, Deputy Clerk McDowell, if you would please call the roll on the approval of minutes.
Councilmember Scambalary.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And I believe Council, Councilmember Flaherty is not on Zoom. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that passes seven zero. Thank you. That takes us into reports. We'll begin first with reports from council members. I'll start on my far left this time. Councilmember Volin.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I just wanted to say, now that it's getting dark early, I want to encourage everyone who's walking and riding bikes to be very mindful of how it gets dark earlier. I was coming into the city, and this is, this is not, this has happened before, that somebody's, you know, riding a bike, and I think it's great, I ride a bike along in traffic in dark clothing and no light on when, when it was getting kind of dark, and, you know, it was, it was a little scary because it was over there by the mall. So I just encourage everybody to be really mindful and maybe put, put lights on your bike because we don't want anybody to get hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a report today. This was an interesting news day to wake up this morning to an email. Councilmembers were copied on this letter to Mayor Hamilton from the incoming mayor-elect, Kerry Thompson. The reason why I found this letter important and informative, and I think it's important for the public to be aware of some of these tensions regarding any kind of transition, is because I myself, as a member of this fiscal body, have had questions about various feasibility issues and fiscal issues pertaining to some of the matters that seem to be fast-tracked on our agenda before years end. And so I would like to just read what the mayor-elect said to the current mayor with respect to some of these critical transition issues. She writes, "Dear Mayor Hamilton, as your tenure as mayor of the City of Bloomington is coming to an end, I want to thank you for your service to the city. I look forward to taking office on January one, two thousand and twenty-four, and to working with you and your team to effect a smooth and seamless transition for the benefit of our constituents. With that transition in mind, and given that you have fewer than thirty business days remaining in office, I request that you refrain from making any strategic or discretionary decisions which will impact beyond December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Such decisions would include but not be limited to signing new or extensions of contracts, purchasing or conveying property, making future board and commission appointments. I appreciate your letting vacancies remain or allowing acting interim staff to serve. This reflects our common belief that new administrations are owed the courtesy of making decisions on matters that will impact city government in the next four years and beyond. I welcome the opportunity to engage with you in conversation about what matters, what matters may impact my tenure, in case there are any questions you, you are, you have confusion about what I mean. Of course, you have an obligation to maintain operations and protect assets, which I trust you will do. However, legal and policy decisions that have an effect into two thousand and twenty-four and beyond need not to be made now, and certainly not without consultation with me. Please accept this request with the spirit in which it is intended, which is respectful, collaborative, and with the best interests of Bloomington in mind. The city council members are copied here so that they too are aware of this request and can work with us to this end. Thank you in advance for your consideration and cooperation. Respectfully, Kerry Thompson." Now, you know, we had hoped to have a work session on Showers West this Friday. We were unable to do so because various people that we needed to be in that work session to answer some of our, our tough fiscal and feasibility questions were not available. But I have a list of six or seven questions myself about some of the issues pertaining to what's before us with respect to the renovations of Showers West, the possible sale of the Third Street Police Headquarters, and so this is just one of several issues that certainly have bothered me as we come to the end of this term, and certainly this letter from mayor-elect Kerry Thompson certainly reflect her concerns as well. I will just say to conclude that I, as one of nine on this council, will very respectfully and eagerly respect her request. I think it is fair, and I think in, with respect to the new administration, starting in January, that this is, at the very least, she should ask, is better cooperation with the transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, to follow up, as a member of the fiscal body of the City of Bloomington, there is, that is a modest request, and I support that. A request was made by myself on October twenty-fourth, made by, through Stephen Lucas, our counsel attorney to the administration, for information regarding an appraisal that was done on the Third Street Police Station. And so far, there has been no response. So I'll ask this very publicly, that it's important that we have that information. The sale is underway, the asking price is three point two million, there are indications that the appraisal was potentially several millions above that, and I would like, and I think my colleagues would like that information. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, now joining us in person.
Sure, thank you. We got Zoom audio working, maybe I should have just stayed at home, but I am within CDC guidelines, just to clarify. I had COVID last week, but I'm past that stage, and also wearing a mask, which isn't a caution, cautionary measure. I didn't plan to share a report, but I'll weigh in on the same issue that I just heard my colleagues weighing in on. While I think collaboration is a very good idea over the next two months between administrations, I'm going to respectfully disagree that we shouldn't do our jobs, you know, for the next two months. We were elected for four-year terms, the mayor as well, council. We should serve and make decisions, large and small, as we deem necessary, to effectuate our duties, that we were sworn into office to uphold and further in January of two thousand and twenty. Just one note, December eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen, this council passed the Unified Development Ordinance, replacing, repealing and replacing Title Twenty in the final two weeks of the previous council term. So, let's be clear, that was a big, big action, absolutely as big as anything that future Mayor Thompson seems to be indicating she's referring to here, and some of my colleagues who were just supporting Ms. Thompson's letter seemed to have no problem acting on that very large decision with less than two weeks remaining in the term of the previous council. So I don't begrudge them that decision. I think it was within their right to make those decisions on that timeline, because they were elected to do. So just with all respect to Ms. Thompson, and absolutely supporting collaboration between the ingoing and, or sorry, outgoing and incoming administrations, I don't think it's appropriate to ask either this body or the mayor to refrain from making the decisions that we think are in the best interest of the city in accordance with our duties as elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims? Well, we can't hear you, but we can read, so we could read the subtitles, so.
We're, we're not able to hear you here in the room. I'd suggest waiting to provide this until we have the audio fixed. I apologize. There are folks that, that won't be able to see your comments, so.
Madam Chair, one of us could read his comments as they're coming across over the captioning so that we can capture his thoughts.
Yeah, not ideal, but.
Be happy to.
Yeah, if the council is agreeable, why don't we try that? Councilmember Sims, would it be acceptable to you to have one of our council members read your comments based on the subtitles, based on the captions?
Councilmember Sims, alternatively, if you'd like to send a written comment, I'm happy to read that out loud.
But yes, it would. If you can hear me, okay, I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Sims. And I have no report this evening, so. That takes us to reports from the mayor and city offices. I believe we have Mr. Zodi with us for our housing report from the Hand Department.
Thank you, President Scambalary, and members of the council. Excuse me a minute. Got my hot tea, rest my voice, like it sounds like all of us are a little battling the season a little bit. I think Mr. Lucas is going to get slides rolling here. Okay, all right, well, I'm proud to be in front of you tonight to give you the two thousand and twenty-three housing report from the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department here at the City of Bloomington. I want to start by thanking the staff of the Hand Department, who are a good group of eighteen people who work hard, and along with other departments here at the city and partners in the community, work to advance the, the ball of affordable housing, if you will, here in our city. So glad to be representing all of them tonight to share a lot of good information with you, I hope. Affordable housing in Bloomington since two thousand and sixteen, just a reminder that the, the city here has been engaged in, has engaged community and development partners to tackle the issue of affordable housing. So these are some of the numbers, council members will recall from the budget hearings, but during that time, fifty-six hundred units of housing have been approved, preserved, or are in the pipeline. One thousand three hundred eighty-six of those are considered affordable. The two thousand and twenty housing study that was issued by the City of Bloomington called for two thousand five hundred ninety-two new units of housing by two thousand and thirty. That's compared to a two thousand and nineteen study that was done by Regional Opportunities Initiative, that calling for two thousand two hundred and thirty-six the year before. So since two thousand and twenty, how are we on the housing study, basically? Three thousand six hundred fifty units have been approved, those are mostly rental, as I told you during the budget season, but within that, six hundred forty-five are considered workforce housing or affordable, and that's rental housing. And then we have about two hundred fifteen new single-family units that have been built, approved, or preserved during that time, so that would include houses built by Habitat for Humanity, for example. We are expecting a study to come out from Regional Opportunity Initiatives, that should be coming out soon, and so this is basically an update to the study that was done in two thousand and nineteen. And what we'll see in that study is that it will call for four thousand one hundred fifty-five more units needed in the City of Bloomington by two thousand and thirty-five, so that's an updated number. And across the Indiana Uplands region, which is an eleven-county region, sort of here south, moving southeast and southwest on down to Crawford County, near the river, it will call for six, sixteen thousand seven hundred eighty-four units across the region. So that gives us an idea where we are, what our place is, and the regional housing demand, and what we're looking at over the next twelve years or so. Give you an idea of where affordable units are in the City of Bloomington, sort of a scatter map that we did, and pie chart, it'll tell you what the distribution of the income is. So affordable housing can mean a lot of things. A lot of people say affordable housing is affordable if you can afford it, but as you all know, in government, there are strict definitions of what affordable housing means, and certain percentages of income determine your eligibility for programs. So here in Bloomington, we have what's called an area median income that is determined by the federal government of ninety-seven thousand four hundred dollars this year. For an example, just a reference point, a family of four here in Bloomington that make, that makes sixty percent of area median income would have an income ceiling of fifty-four thousand one hundred eighty dollars. If they were to make more than that as a household, they would be ineligible for certain federal programming, so that's sort of the ceiling that a family of four would have to qualify for those programs. So the map that you see, you've got red and blue that are completed or under construction. I have a star in the middle of the map, that is the Hopewell site, and I'll get to that in just a minute, why I put a star there, but that's an important pin, if you will, to put in the map for tonight. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we focused a lot on movement. What are we doing to, like I said at the beginning, push this ball forward? And that takes, I would call it a, I was thinking to myself this morning, I call it a jolly slog, because this can be a slog. It's not sort of flashy and out front all the time, and doing things that people may see with housing, but it's getting in the weeds and getting stuff done, getting processes done, to make sure that we, the result will be affordable housing. So we've had consideration of projects. So the core administration building at the Hopewell site is a thirty-eight unit development that we are hoping, we will get news tomorrow that it will be funded through low-income housing tax credits. And let me say again, in case I'm a fast talker, but we are hoping for good news tomorrow that that will be the result. We don't know that yet, but tomorrow is the time when the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority will announce their awards, and so we are hoping for good news tomorrow, keep your fingers crossed. Over, Hopewell overall, we're looking at, according to the master plan, six hundred fifty to a thousand units, at least twenty percent of that, we're hoping, will be affordable across the site. The Summit District, this is the PUD that's under consideration right now, current estimates are around four thousand three hundred units that could come in that development due to PUD guidelines, planned unit development guidelines, we would see fifteen percent of that total be affordable in that development. The Arlington Park property off of Seventeenth Street is underway, we're going through the environmental review process there for federal money, but that was, that is where the Summit Hill Community Land Trust will have its development and have affordable homeownership, and those are lots that were granted as part of a larger development that we have, that asset is going to transfer to Summit Hill for affordable housing development. So we've been doing project consideration, getting it through the approval processes, doing environmental reviews, which take a long time, that's a federal regulation, getting agreements done, building relationships, so we did about forty hours of outreach earlier this year for the Home ARP program. This is a two million dollars worth of money that I've spoken to the council about before that will help provide supportive services and rental housing construction, required a lot of outreach, it required an allocation plan to be written, that was written and approved in July. So building relationships in the development community locally, regionally, and nationally, and formalizing processes for federal funding in the Hand Department, that's a big piece of what we do, and so we were visited by the federal government this year, and part of their periodic monitoring processes that they do, they came in and said, here's a process that we think should be done differently, and so we've been doing a lot of those things to get processes underway, to modernize the department, and make sure that we are running efficient from here on out. So two thousand and twenty-three's been about movement, and so if I, that's how I characterized it, and I will say it was a jolly slog, because it's good work, this is good stuff, but it can be, it can be a lot, and so we're glad to be doing the work. Our focus areas, this is something when I talk to the public and others do about how the city approaches affordable housing, and really three main buckets, what the Hamilton administration has done. Housing security, what are we doing to assist those most at risk of housing insecurity? Who's paying too much of their income on housing and is otherwise insecure, is just one disaster away from being unhoused, for instance? What are we doing to increase the availability of affordable rental housing in Bloomington? And then how are we increasing the opportunity to own and stay in a home here in our city? Mary Morgan is here with Heading Home of South Central Indiana, big partner in the housing security movement. As you know, we, the city has appropriated two point seven million dollars from our ARPA funds to the Heading Home effort. It was a partnership with the Community Foundation in United Way, and you heard from Mary on October fourth, when she did her presentation update for you here at the council. And we're talking more about how do we support our affordable housing, and that's something Mary's involved with, and we're convening a group to talk about, what are we, what are we doing to support affordable housing once it's online? How are we helping the residents, and, and what does that look like? We awarded Community Development Block Grant dollars and Jack Hopkins Funding through the council for two thousand and twenty-two, that totaled about one point one eight million dollars for our local agency network, and we are implementing a new software program for efficiency in the department. So application intake and all the thing, all the logistics, hopefully are going to be more efficient moving forward for our partnering agencies. And then Home ARP funds that I just mentioned, I want to thank you for your input and the community, like I said, about forty hours of outreach there with people with lived experience, organizations dealing in, who need more caseworkers and social services, and those who interact with those who are either unhoused or maybe experiencing a crisis, and so we're looking forward to deploying that funding here in the, in the coming years. On the rental side, I always talk about equity in housing with our rental program. You're entitled to safe housing if you rent in the City of Bloomington, no matter what rent you pay, and that's important. And we have about twenty-nine thousand rental units that are under the Hand Department's jurisdiction for periodic inspection and, and monitoring. We have a new system that we've implemented this year, and include, we did a rental file audit, so a lot of files, a lot of properties, are we being efficient, are we, did things get done, how are we doing that? So our new assistant director, Anna Hansen, I want to give her a shout out tonight because she's worked very, very hard on this since she came on just this summer. The Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, that is an effort of the Bloomington Housing Authority, the city has provided three hundred nineteen thousand dollars of ARPA funds for capacity and to help with the insurance pool. So this is an effort to get more people housed, more leases signed, getting more landlords on board and partnered to help people get leased. Thus far, we've had nearly a hundred people educated, going through the seminar that the BHA does to help educate people and learn what it is. We've had twenty-three leases signed, and twenty-eight thousand dollars earmarked, so when that lease is signed, working with the landlord and the property manager, and say, okay, what is, what should the deposit, what is the guarantee? You're signing a lease, we're willing to guarantee that lease with some money, and we understand your risk may be higher, so help, we're going to help with that, and this, this is where this money's going to come in and be helpful in getting more people in homes. And then we do monitoring of workforce housing and affordable housing, so all those units I showed you on that map, we check in with those properties at least once a year. They're also subject to our rental program, but we want to make sure that they are monitored, monitored, and are leasing to people who are the appropriate income bands that we set those projects up to do, and so we are approaching completion on getting our monitoring for two thousand and twenty-three finished. On the ownership side, preserving ownership, rehabs are very important, they take a long time, they can be very cumbersome, but preserving homeownership is important, especially in our core neighborhoods. People live in their homes for a long time and want to stay there, we want to help do that if we can. We have down payment assistance programs, and our shared depreciation program that have, have come in very handy to homeowners. We just closed on a down payment on Tuesday for a ten thousand dollar down payment for a resident here in Bloomington. And then we're expanding programming, we have a new program manager that started this year, a new position that you all appropriated for in two thousand and twenty-four, and then we continue to be a land trust partner with the BHA and Summit Hill Community Development Corporation. So the Housing Development Fund, this report, it was initialized as a report to the council on the Housing Development Fund activity, when it was created in two thousand and sixteen. And the Housing Development Fund is a nimble, local-funded tool to provide solutions for both affordable rental and homeownership housing, promoting long-term affordability for people at least a hundred twenty percent or less of area median income. So federal subsidies go up to eighty percent, our local programs can go up to a hundred and twenty, which can scoop in a whole another group of people who may be struggling to afford housing, but may be making too much to get in those federal subsidy eligibility areas. This is funded by several different sources, not consistent all the time, but these are different places that have, where money has come into the fund over the almost eight years of its existence. So give you a summary here, total spent out of the fund since two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, about one point five million dollars, total revenue about four point two. This includes payments and contributions to the fund. It's resulted in assisting in the creation of three hundred twenty-six units, that includes an upcoming commitment we've got, we believe we'll do that yet this year for forty-eight units. So that investment, the per-unit investment, which is something we've talked to you about before, and how do we look at what's, what's, what's reasonable, what makes sense when you're subsidizing affordable housing, it's about five thousand dollars a unit is where we are on those housing development fund investments that we've seen. You appropriated four hundred seventy-six thousand for, out of the Housing Development Fund for next year. We also have ARPA funds, creed, and ED Lit money that are appropriated for housing as well in the two thousand and twenty-four budget year. So the cash balance, how much is in there right now, it's about two point seven million dollars. And we have a project that, in the pipeline, coming up that could result in more affordable units. And we have a project that, at the pipeline coming up that could result in more affordable units or more, or a payment in lieu, which is where a contribution would go into the Housing Development Fund. So major project updates, this is where I'll wrap up. Hopewell, we are, there's a lot of activity there. We have, are engaging with the development community. We have proposals out for the big portion, Phase 1 East, which is the block between the Beeline and Rogers. We have, those proposals are due back December 1st for who wants to develop on those three blocks that are in that, that area. We are, have proposals back for the southern portion, the, where all the old medical office buildings are. The, a lot of people say they got their COVID shot at the old medical services building on West 1st Street that we have proposals back there and are considering those. We will soon see the final land transfer come from IU Health. We don't yet own the block where the hospital itself sat. That will come to us around the end of the year, according to the purchase agreement that was signed about five years ago. And we do expect news on the core building. The core building is a very exciting project. If we get 38 units there, 10 units of those, it will be supportive housing with a partnership with Centerstone. It's a really exciting opportunity for Bloomington to preserve a historic structure as well. Arlington Park Drive, we had a ribbon cutting in October. That'll result again in 45 lots that are going to be suited for affordable housing homeownership. And then the Summit District project I spoke of earlier down at the Sudbury property. That's what a lot of people have known it to be. That's under consideration with the Plan Commission now. It could be a result of new TIF districts as the units are considered and we look at what that looks like. That's still a long way to go there, but certainly something that's on the map and something the, the team here at the city has been working on. So just what guides us? How do we do this? Who's involved? Really, everybody's involved. There's a big, multi-departmental team here at the city. Like I said, we have partners like Heading Home and Social Service Community, others who are interested in housing. We're guided by data. And that's how we do this. And we look at those programs, what's needed to run those programs at the federal, state, and the local level. And then, of course, we look at the UDO and sites for development. What's there for us to develop? Who's interested in building in Bloomington? And what does the city own? And what can the city lead proactively and get development going on a parcel that it might own? Or, or have some ability to, to proactively choose what, what might go there as far as housing goes. So that's the report. Hopefully I didn't go too quickly, but wanted to be respectful of your time. Happy to answer any questions. I want to thank you for your support of affordable housing, housing generally, and certainly something you're all interested in and I've spoken to you about over the years and look forward to your questions.
Great. Thank you for that report, Mr. Zodi. We have just under five minutes for questions. Let's start, Councilmember Volan.
Thanks for the report. I've got two questions. I don't know if we can go back to earlier slides, but one of them was, you said that the community needed, according to estimates, about 4,000 to 5,000 units of housing by 2035. Is that right?
That's, yeah.
ROI said that. But you've also just said that between Summit and Hopewell, we're looking at 5,000 new units in the next 10, 12 years. Would you say that those two projects alone would adequately satisfy the demand for new housing?
I would not yet, Councilmember Volan. It puts, puts a big, puts a lot on the board. One thing that we've got to do is be respectful of, if, if we're adhering to the study, we've got to look at what the breakdown is there. So when we look at what those units are, what's possible right now? I talked to a developer yesterday and they said interest rates are, it's tough with interest rates being where they are. So what, what can we get done with the reality of the market? What the study says, you need this many in rental for this price point. You need this many in ownership for this price point. So we've got to make sure that the numbers are going to align with what the study calls for before I'll say it's what we need.
Is that study calling for units of any kind or of affordable units?
It's, it, both. So, but all the studies, all of these studies listed has a breakdown. So for the 2,592, for instance, in the 2020 housing study, it called for 1,555 owner-occupied more units.
We didn't get that.
And, right. And 1,037 rentals. So we're good on rental as far as that numbers go. But again, you've really got to break it down and look at, is it the kind of rentals? Is it the kind of ownership opportunity? And that study also broke it down further.
The other question has to do with the, near the last slide where you had the, the amount of the HDF. So you've raised since 2017, 4.2 million, but you've only spent 1.5 million. I, I hear you say that insurance, rather, interest rates are an issue in building lately. But is there a reason why the city hasn't put that money into more? Why is there so much still in the HDF? Why has it been?
I think we, we have other programs. So our, our federal subsidies, we've put a lot of, a lot of our federal money into a lot of the developments over the last several years. I'll say, my philosophy is that we spend our federal dollars first because it's timed. If you don't spend your federal dollars at a certain number of years, you lose it. So we have prioritized spending federal money first. And so that has, as the Housing Development Fund has built up, the other thing I'll say is there's not a consistent revenue source into the Housing Development Fund. So one thing we're trying to do now is plan better and say, looking down the pike, when we've got 5,000 units coming down the road, maybe, how do we make sure that we are deploying this amount of Housing Development Fund? This amount of ARPA, this amount of home, all of that stuff? So the planning is very important as this fund is relatively new.
Those are excellent answers. One last follow-up then would be, this money on this screen here does not represent all the money that has gone to, that's just local money. How much money would you say has gone altogether over the past two terms to, to housing or affordable housing that the city's been involved with?
That's a great question. Millions, I'd need to get you a better number there.
Is it 5 million, 10 million, 100 million?
I don't think I'd be comfortable. When you look, when you add up all the different incentives and programs through tax abatements and payments in lieu, land, land deals, if we discounted land and gave it, I'd need to get you a solid number on that before I'd speculate what that is.
But it's more than this?
Absolutely.
Is it a lot more than this?
A lot more than what we've spent out of the Housing Development Fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. I could tell you, for, just for instance, for a, yeah.
Last, last.
Can you please finish up? We have a more question.
Yeah, sorry, I stumbled there on a minute, my voice. But we've put, in, in any type of development, we've put anywhere from $250,000 to $500,000 of federal subsidy in. So that gives you an idea per development, what we've done. So there's quite a bit there.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you for the report. Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, is that only for landlords who accept housing vouchers?
No, it can be for others as well. So because we want to lease up folks who may have, may not necessarily need a voucher, but may have another risk factor as well.
I'm sorry.
They may have another risk factor, not just financial necessarily.
I see, I see.
So it's not just for those. It's prioritized at first because it is run through the Housing Authority, but it's not just for that.
Okay, thank you. I have a few other questions. I'll just follow up with you later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zodi. Much appreciated. So with that, we come to an opportunity for reports from council committees. Are there any? Seeing none, that'll bring us to our first of two periods of public comment for items not on our legislative agenda this evening. So may I have a show of hands in count, in chambers? How many would like to offer a public comment? One, two, three. Okay. And Mr. Lucas, can you extend our, well, can, if, if we can't get audio on Zoom? Have we gotten audio on Zoom yet?
I was just in touch with one of our IT department folks, who's remoting in, trying to sort out the issue. So maybe we could start with the folks here in the room?
Okay.
If we can sort this out while they're speaking.
Okay, let's at least get the timer up on, on screen. So for those of you in chambers who would like to offer comment, please approach the podium. You'll have a chance to sign in if you would, and then share your name for the record. And once you do that, let's see, how many? One, two, three, four, five. Let's say four minutes for individual comment. You'll see a timer up on screen and a timer on the little screen to your left there. So, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary Morgan with Heading Home of South Central Indiana. I just wanted to express thanks and gratitude to the city's Hand Department, in particular, John Zodi. He has been a tremendous partner, thoughtful, responsive, very collaborative. He's mastering HUD regulations, which is no small feat. And he has a deep commitment to strengthening the housing supply stock accessibility in our community. And I just wanted to recognize that and to thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, if you would, please sign in. And then if you would, share your name for the record, and you will have four minutes.
Okay, four minutes. Well, thanks for letting me come and speak tonight. And I have a photo, I don't know if you want to see photos.
Can you share your name for the record, please?
Do what now?
Could you share your name for the record?
John Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
And I'm a Bloomington resident. I'm the president of Gentry Estates Homeowners Association. I also work for the state of Indiana. And what brings me here tonight is we have two ponds in our subdivision. And the fiber optic cable people, they hit the, they hit a sewage line going from the lift station in, in our subdivision. And when they hit the sewage line, then the water from the, from the lift station, it flowed into the drainage system in our subdivision. And the drainage system, it flows into the pond. And our, one of our ponds is totally contaminated and ruined. And the main, the main thing that I wanted to point out is we want to thank Vic Helsin and Holly McLaughlin because when this was brought to their attention, what was happening, they took steps to have the pond drained. And so that way, it's not a danger to the residents of Gentry Estates or any other subdivision that we have. Because when you have contaminated water, people could get sick from all kinds of stuff. It's an E. coli issue. And so now here's, here's a picture. Can we show this? You can see the dead fish that are, that are in the pond. And of course, that's why we knew that we had to get the pond drained. And we certainly thank Vic and Holly for taking steps to get this done because we don't want the pond to be a danger to our residents. And now this isn't the first time that we've had problems with the fiber optic people damaging stuff in our subdivision. Because they're, because when they put the fiber optic cable in, near my house, they cut the sewer line going to my house, and I had over $10,000 damage to the floors in my house. And the, the insurance company had to pay for. And so, so we were, we're used to lots of damage from the fiber optics. And a lot of people complain all the time about their yards being damaged because of the fiber optics. So it's, it's, this is an issue we're very used to having to deal with damage because of fiber optics, but we've never had anything like this before where one of our ponds is completely ruined. It had to be drained because of this. And so I, but I just, we just want to thank Vic for taking the steps of having the pond tested. And the health department tested the pond water, but Vic also took steps to have it done. And it showed that the E. coli level in the upper pond that we have was way above what's acceptable levels. And so he said that they would test it after it's refilled and make sure it's not below acceptable levels. Does anybody have any questions?
No, this is not an opportunity for questions. This is just an opportunity for comment. So, and thank you for your comments.
Okay, I hope you appreciate my comments.
Yeah, you still have a little bit of time left, if you will.
Oh, I do?
You have 32 seconds.
Okay, well, we have a great subdivision. And I've been doing this for 25 years, being the president of the HOA. And so I'm used to dealing with issues. And so I love, I love being able to solve problems for the residents. And so, and, and we're getting this one solved. And that's what we're doing. And thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Arnold. And who do we have next? Welcome, if you would, please sign in, share your name for the record, and then you'll have four minutes.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I'm coming here from Twin Lakes as a basketball coach. My hat's off to Scott Peterson, who runs that program. So if you excuse me if I use a few basketball metaphors in my public comment tonight. It goes back to the West Showers Building that, if you recall, I spoke on, to end your last meeting two weeks ago. And I appreciate the council's due diligence in trying to get that work session that I called for, but you need the right people there in order to have it made. When we look at the West Showers Building that we've talked about earlier, it's, it's about responsibility. That's what I ask my players, my third grade players to do, is be responsible for their actions. And that's what we're looking for, is fiscal responsibility on this. We need it for it to be feasible. Is this going to be a feasible new public safety headquarters? And then transparency, do we know all of the facts on this? And this is where I've called for, where we don't. I don't think it's a matter of, of decisions that should be made while you're in office. You should, but when we're talking about a 30-year decision, I think it's vital that the public knows all of the information on this so we can make those sort of long-term decisions that are required. I don't, when I coach, make sort of long-term decisions to, or short-term decisions to, that's in the long term, that makes no sense. We heard from the FOP, the firefighters on this, and we just need answers. We're looking at the sale of 3rd Street Headquarters before we have those answers. And that, you know, I know the council's going to have to approve that before it goes through, but we just need those answers sooner than later because it's going to come before us and we're going to be overwhelmed with that information. The other thing I wanted to talk about today is the two and a half hour, 10-session City of Bloomington Citizens Police Academy that I just completed. I want to say what that two bigger department brings is what I try to bring. Coaching is a culture. They have a great culture there. One thing I learned through a series of these sort of seminars on various topics, from evidence to domestic violence, to social work, to firearms. They took my questions. This wasn't anything to sort of pat on the back for a great performance, but we had 12 to 13 attendees for this, for a chance for real interaction with our police force. It's important to know that, you know, we're not talking about policing in America. We're talking about the police that are next door neighbors and the great job that they do. And I, they do that by the culture, with their hiring and getting rid of those that don't fit in their culture, which is a very positive culture. And I came away with that as someone who has a history of being skeptical of, of law enforcement, really positive. And I encourage residents here and council members, future, to take part in that 10 weeks. It is a great opportunity to really learn and ask questions about all aspects of policing. And I have, as I mentioned, no interest in ever becoming a police officer ever in my life, but I found that a very rewarding experience. This is someone who went through the Residents Academy, who went through leadership Bloomington, Moreau County. So it's important to be sort of engaged with our civil servants, especially as I come before you oftentimes, to speak about law enforcement. It's a priority of the chamber. Public safety is the utmost what local government should be doing. And it was my hats off to the BPD on what I thought was a very informational and very educational time in those 10 weeks. I thank you for your time tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. MG. And we have one additional comment here in chambers. Welcome, if you would, please sign in and share your name for the record, and then you'll have four minutes.
Hello. I've got some good, bad, and ugly. The good, I want to compliment BPD. I had interaction with them a few weeks ago. I had a vehicle stolen and some vandalism done, done to my pickup. They was right on it. They was right on it. I appreciate them guys. Officer Snowden, Officer Reynolds, and Sergeant Jordan. They went beyond the call of duty to help me out. They done great. And I always like to say good things about BPD. They get beat up a lot in this town. A lot of people want to defund them. No, they need more money. And you guys need to listen to the police of where, where they want to go. You know, 3rd Street up here, you know, you need to let them kind of get more in that. I watch a lot of this. And you need to let them guys get more involved in more, more decisions of, of where they're going to go. You know, because them, them guys do a great job. That's the good. The bad, no beacon on 3rd Street. The bad, no beacon on Third Street. I know the decision's already been made, the beacon on Third Street. It's right by the cemetery. I've got family members resting in that place. I'm concerned of what's going to happen because my family members are right along Third Street. I'm wondering what's going to happen when they're throwing their needles in their trash and going in there and doing what they do. Because they've done showed what they do. Look at Seminary Park. I can't believe that still goes on. You drive by there, and it's a circus. It's alcohol, drugs, load this, you know, just what's, why is that been going on so long? That ought to be a park for me to be able to take my 16 grandchildren into. I can't, I can't do that. They've took it over. You know, I was, I was coming down to Third Street, Third and Patterson last night. I looked, smoke everywhere. I thought something was on fire. Well, there's behind Klein Dorfers, in the woods, the homeless building fires. One of these days, and there's a no burn, you know. What's going to happen when something, they burn everything down, man? You know, they start a big old fire. You know, it's out of control. They're in the woods everywhere in Bloomington. We need to quit making them so comfortable, like Kinzer Flats, Crawford House. Man, I could tell you stories about that place. That place is out of control. Why, why is it something being done about the Crawford House? It's out of control. Kinzer Flats, always hearing on my scanner, I like to listen to the scanner. A lot of people probably do. I'm nothing abnormal. But you know, all kinds of stuff going on to Kinzer Flats. Is anybody watching that place or Crawford House? You know, more bad. That thing at Rogers and Allen, that thing that they put in, the traffic calming thing, that needs to be gone. I know police officers and firemen just hate that thing. They're flying up Rogers Street to kind of go to help someone with, shoot someone up with Narcan. They got to slow down right there. You know, I know Isabel Piedmont Smith lives right there on that corner. Lots of stuff getting going on in that neighborhood because of her. They put speed bumps, yeah, I know you're not going to admit it, but you live right there. Them speed bumps right there on Allen, between Madison and Rogers, uncalled for, waste of money. Nobody drives that road. And when they do, my daughter lived on Allen and Rogers. I was there all the time. I never seen anybody speeding. What a waste of money. But that thing at Allen and Rogers needs to go. Who thinks of them things?
Mr. Ruble, you're at your time. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, you're welcome.
So anything else you'd like to submit? You can submit in writing.
Why, can you keep going?
No, you can submit them in writing to council.
Oh, you, okay.
You can submit them in writing. Thank you for your comments this evening.
Okay, you're welcome again.
Okay. Are there any additional comments here in chambers? Mr. Lucas, dare I ask how we're doing with audio on Zoom?
I'm not sure that we've got it fixed. Our IT member is still remoting in, I believe. We do have one hand raised from Jim Shelton. I've messaged our Zoom attendees to warn them that we may not be able to hear comments. If you'd like to try with Mr. Shelton, we can, but I'm not optimistic.
Why don't we try it? Mr. Shelton, I hope you can hear me. Welcome, if you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have four minutes. And I may interrupt you if we don't get audio, and we'll invite you to submit your comments in writing. No? Okay. Mr. Shelton, I apologize for interrupting. We're still having difficulty with audio, and we're not getting audio via Zoom. So if you would, if you would please share your comments in writing. If you can quickly type something into chat, we'll be happy to share it. Or you can submit your comments to council in writing. So are there any additional comments here in chambers? Okay, seeing none, that'll conclude our first. Wait a moment. I don't think we've got audio.
No, in case he wants to type up something.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Mr. Lucas, are we seeing any typewritten messages?
No, not at the moment. I understand folks on Zoom could hear Mr. Shelton. We're not able to hear him in the room. Our IT staff member, I believe, is still working on this. Hopefully, we'll get it resolved here in the next couple of minutes. But at this time, we're not able to hear him.
Yeah, we have a second period of public comments, so if we have any written comments, we can always read them then. So, not ideal.
Apologies, Mr. Shelton would like to share that CASA training starts on February the 6th.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Shelton. So are there additional comments here in chambers? Mr. Ruble, you've already had an opportunity, so. No, Mr. Ruble, you've already had your opportunity, and you have used your, please step away from the microphone, Mr. Ruble. You've had your opportunity, and you've had as much as everyone else, so it's fair. We're happy to take your comments in writing, so. Any other comments here in chambers? Okay, that'll conclude our first of two periods of public comment. We will keep our fingers crossed for audio. And let's go to appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any from any of the interview committees? Or any business in that arena? Seeing none, let's continue to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that resolution, um, being introduced and read by the clerk by title on synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes. Councilmember Sims.
He said yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Oh, yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Scimbalery?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes? Will the deputy clerk please read?
Resolution 23-19 to approve the interlocal agreement between Monroe County, the town of Ellisville, and the city of Bloomington for animal shelter operation for the year 2024. The synopsis is, this resolution authorizes execution by the mayor and director of animal care and control of the animal shelter interlocal agreement for fiscal year 2024 between the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, and town of Ellisville. The agreement provides that Monroe County shall pay the city of Bloomington the sum of $371,220 for 2024 in return for the space the city provides to the county and services it renders on the county's behalf. The agreement further provides that the town of Ellisville shall pay to the city of Bloomington the sum of $25,555 for 2024 in return for the space the city provides the town of Ellisville and services it renders on the town of Ellisville's behalf.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that resolution 2319 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Mr. Sauter with us this evening.
Good evening. Virgil Sauter, Director of Animal Care and Control for the city. This interlocal agreement for animal services between the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, and town of Ellisville has been going on, on an annual basis, being renewed for many, many years, and has worked well for the, all parties involved. While the county provides animal management services for the county residents as well as the town of Ellisville, they do not have their own animal sheltering facility. So in exchange for the city, animal shelter providing care and housing for county animals as well as reunification, adoption, and euthanasia services for Monroe County and the town of Ellisville, agree to reimburse the city for, for those services. That agreed amount is based on actual intake and expenses from the previous complete year. So the 2024 agreement is based on the 2022 year of animal shelter program expenses, so the portion that is dedicated for direct animal care, as well as those intake numbers. In 2024, approximately 3% of animals came from the Ellisville city limits, and 43% of animals came from Monroe County. The reimbursement cost, you might note, for 2024 is higher than the current year's agreement, and this is due largely to the larger number of intake of animals from county sources during that same year. So though our expenses were a little bit less, we did take in more county animals that year. So our 2024 agreement is higher, sorry, I lost my train of thought, is higher than the previous year. You will notice in this agreement, there is a new clause concerning a committee being formed. This is to meet the state code. We are currently working with the county and town of Ellisville to name the members of that commission, but both the county and Ellisville have ratified this, this agreement and signed it. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Director Sauter. I'm wondering, with the increase in, in intake in Ellisville, what about the facility space? Is it adequate, or does it strain our capacity in terms of space or staff?
Yeah, so that's, that's an excellent question. This, um, those intake years, we functioned well. I will say that currently, where the shelter is at this year, our, our space is strained. We are seeing our numbers increasing this year. We are actually looking to be back towards our 2017, 2018 levels of intake. So our intake is going back up.
So is this an anomaly, then, this, this year's numbers? Or do you think that it will continue this, this level from, is there any way of knowing?
Based, there's, there's no way to know 100%, but based on national trends and national averages, we are kind of mimicking those. Across the nation, animal shelters are seeing higher intakes, they're seeing longer length of stay, and more overcrowding issues. And we're definitely starting to see that locally here.
Okay, well, I appreciate updates as we go in terms of whether, how to address this problem. It seems complicated.
I will say we have an excellent team that loves challenges, and, and we are making efforts to make those, those changes happen and continue good care for our animals.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Sauter. Let's go to public comment. If there is public comment, if you'd like to offer comment on Resolution 2319, please go ahead and approach the podium. And our Zoom invitation extender is out in the hallway. Is there any comment here in chambers on Resolution 2319? Okay, seeing none? Okay, let's come back to council. Are there additional questions? Okay? Or any final comments? Okay? In which case, Deputy Clerk McDowell, if you would, please call the roll on Resolution 2319.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Scimbalery?
Yes.
And Sims? Thank you.
And the record can show that Councilmember Sims voted yes. That passes 8-0. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2320 be introduced and read by the clerk by title on synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Scimbalery?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Uh, Sims? Thank you. And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes. Will the clerk please, deputy clerk, please read?
I believe a motion needs to be made to adopt.
Oh.
No. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. To, Resolution 2320, to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana regarding building code authority. The synopsis is, the interlocal cooperation agreement extends through January 1st, 2025, the long-term arrangement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County to combine and coordinate the provision of certain building code services. This interlocal cooperation is authorized by Indiana Code 36-1-7-1.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2320 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Ms. Kate with us.
Good evening, council members. Beth Kate, Corporation Council. So this resolution involves extending for another year to January 1st, 2025, the longstanding arrangement between the city and the county concerning the application of the building code and the collaboration between the building department of the county and planning and transportation here at the city. The purpose is just to make it convenient and efficient for residents of the city and county to obtain building permits, which the county processes on behalf of the city. And we've updated the agreement, you've seen this agreement many times before, so let me just call out what's changed. We've updated the agreement following discussions with the county building department, and appreciate Bobby LaRue and Dave Schilling's help with this, but as well as, of course, our own great planning staff. Specifically, Part 2D is updated to reflect the fact that both the county and the city have digital management systems that they use for permits, building permits, and on our side, certificates of zoning compliance. And what we'd like to do is to make it as easy as possible for each other to access the necessary information on the status of those documents through the use of the digital systems, whether that's by granting credentials, you know, to each other, or building in digital workflow that allows for that, as opposed to having people who are applicants have to go and physically pick up documents and take them between different places. It also cuts out that middle process, which just will reduce the risk of errors or things just going wrong somehow, and the documents getting from A to B. So that's the thrust of the change in Part 2D. With respect to Part 2E, that just clarifies that the building department's notice obligations when it's conducting inspections for occupancy certifications, it does not include single-family residences. They don't have to give us notice every time one of those is scheduled. Apparently, the, the scheduling of those changes a lot. They are often canceled and rescheduled, and the city has not traditionally relied on those to accompany the building department in such inspections. It's more focused on commercial or multifamily. And so with that in mind, the changes reflect that and still preserve the ability, obviously, for the city and county to get the information they need with respect to any inspection that's going on or the resulting occupancy certification. And then finally, Part 2H reflects that the city and county GIS folks work closely together. They're working closely together now. And this is really just to reflect that and kind of, you know, call out that they are working together, will continue to work together to try to correct any errors that may be in the system supporting Elevate or otherwise. That's pretty much it. Happy to answer questions.
Are there questions for Ms. Kate regarding Resolution 2320? Seeing no questions, let's go to public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers who would like to offer comment on Resolution 2320? Seeing no one, I feel the need to check in with Mr. Lucas. Have we gotten audio yet, or no?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay. In which case, let's come back to council. Are there any additional ques, are there any questions or any final comment? Seeing none, Deputy Clerk McDowell, if you would, please call the roll on Resolution 2320.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bolan?
Yes.
Scimbalery?
Yes.
Sims?
Reflect, record indicates yes.
Okay, thank you. And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes 8-0. Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2321 be introduced and read by the clerk by title on synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Out of the room.
Bolan?
Yes.
Scimbalery?
Yes.
Sims? Thank you. Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes. Will the deputy clerk please read?
Resolution 23-21 to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, in regards to the 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, also known as JAG. The synopsis is- The synopsis is, this resolution approves the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county for 2023 JAG funds. JAG funds are divided between the city and the county based on violent crime statistics reported to the FBI through the Uniform Crime Report. A three-year review of violent crime statistics shows that the city is entitled to 93% of the grant funds, and the county is entitled to the remaining 7%. The overall JAG award for 2023 is $54,337. The city will receive $50,533, and the county will receive $3,804. The city will apply its award to the purchase of portable radios. The county will apply its award to the purchase of automated external defibrillators, AED.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2321 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Kate?
Okay, thank you. So the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, or JAG grant, is back before you. This is something else that you've seen very frequently, I think, for at least about 14 years. We've had this interlocal. This program is administered by the Bureau of Justice Assistance. It's the largest federal support for criminal justice funding to state and local jurisdictions. And to receive such funds, the city and the county go in together on an application for the funds, and they need to enter into an agreement that contains certain basic commitments to cooperate and communicate, to be responsible for their individual use of the funds. The agreement's really quite basic, and the terms of it have not changed except for the specifics on the amount of funding and the division, which, as you just heard, is based on FBI statistics on violent crime. And so that determines the allocation between the city and the county. This year, the total amount of funding received in response to our joint application to BJA was $54,337, so 54,337, compared to 49,363 last year. BPD will be receiving 93% of that, or $50,337, and will use that for portable radios, as you just heard. The county sheriff is to receive the remaining amount, the remaining 7%, and that amounts to $3,804, and will be using that for defibrillators. So other than that, nothing has changed with respect to the contents of this agreement. Prior awards have similarly funded equipment and other types of expenditures by BPD and the Sheriff's Department. Happy to try to answer questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kate. I was just wondering, and I don't know if you can answer this, but the, is the JAG grant funding something that our police department counts on in order to fund certain equipment each year? Do they kind of say, okay, we're going to get about this much, and so let's use it for this? Or is it kind of an extra thing that they just like, okay, well, if we have the money, we'll do this? You know, how is it thought of?
Yeah, honestly, I think that's a better question for Mike Decoff than for me. I really don't know the answer to that. I mean, I think that this funding has been around for about 20 years. I think that, given the scope of it, I know the program has made billions of dollars of funding available to state and local jurisdictions. And so I would suspect that jurisdictions do anticipate that the program will continue. I don't know that there's any sense that it wouldn't continue, but how everyone plans on their use for it and where it fits alongside the rest of their budget, I think that's a better question for BPD.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment on Resolution 2321. Are there any commenters here in chambers? Mr. Lucas, do you want to, I assume we don't have audio back yet?
I don't believe so.
Okay, do you want to at least extend an invitation to type into chat perhaps?
Yes, if there are members of the public that have a comment to share on this item or any of the upcoming items on the agenda, please send a chat to the meeting host, and we would be happy to read those out loud. Again, apologies for the audio issues tonight.
Thank you. And let's just give that a minute to see if anyone offers comment.
Any comments, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see any immediate comments coming in.
Okay. Thank you. Let's come back to council. Are there any remaining questions or final comments on Resolution 2321? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I noticed in the fact sheet that we are provided from the Bureau of Justice Assistance that there are areas of emphasis that they put out for this year that they wanted to see applications, especially for these areas of emphasis. And those include advancing justice system reform efforts, advancing racial equity and support for underserved communities, preventing and combating hate crimes, crime and violence reduction strategies, and community-based violence intervention approaches. And I noticed that, you know, our, neither the city nor the county's proposals include any of these points of emphasis. Obviously, the proposals were accepted, and they're being funded, and that's fine. But I, I think these areas that are in the fact sheet are very important areas for our community, for probably all communities in the U.S. And as we've been discussing, especially since 2020, justice reform is something that, that should be considered because what we have been doing is not, is not working. And certainly during our discussions of the new jail and the Community Justice Task Force through the county, we've been focusing a lot on, on recidivism, on underserved communities, on racial equity, things like that. So obviously, those are priorities here locally. And so I am a bit disappointed that the proposal that was submitted for the JAG grant did not have to do with that. And I would urge the individuals that are making plans for next year's JAG grants to consider the areas of emphasis that the, that the Bureau of Justice presents for next year. I don't know if those also will align well with community values, but if not, certainly the ones for this year did. So I just urge us to look a little more broadly and more creatively at how we can use these funds instead of using them to buy standard equipment, which seems to be the routine in recent years. Because, of course, we do have PS Lit funds that can be used for the more routine things. And perhaps, I don't know how the, the funding source evaluates grant proposals, but perhaps if we are in an area of emphasis, we might be able to receive more funds. So just something to consider for next year.
Thank you. Any additional comment on Resolution 2321? Seeing none, Deputy Clerk McDowell, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Bowlin?
Yes.
Skimbalery?
Yes.
Sims?
Syndicated yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes eight zero. Thank you, everyone.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2322 be introduced and read by the clerk by title in synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Skimbalery?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes, I see.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and that passes. Will the deputy clerk please read?
Resolution 23-22, to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Bloomington and Monroe County, Indiana, for the operation of the Bloomington/Monroe County Capital Improvement Board and the Convention and Visitors Commission. The synopsis is, this resolution approves the interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and the county for mutual and collaborative support of an expanded convention center, any related amenities, and necessary related entities, including the Capital Improvement Board, CIB, and Convention and Visitors Commission, CVC, managing the expansion project and convention center operations.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2322 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. And Ms. Kate?
Thank you. So Resolution 2322 approves an interlocal agreement between the city and Monroe County for collaborative support of the convention center expansion and the entities that will be involved in the project, including the Capital Improvement Board that the county created in July, and the Convention and Visitors Commission. The interlocal reflects extensive discussions and negotiations between the city and the county with the goal of creating a solid and collaborative path forward that will produce a first-class convention center expansion for the good of our community. I want to give a shout out to Greg Goodnight, former mayor of Kokomo, who's here with us tonight, whom Mayor Hamilton engaged to participate in these negotiations and who's been a great help. So I'll also give a shout out to John Whiteheart in the corner over there, who's actually the president of the CIB that was created as well. So I just want to quickly describe the landscape in which this agreement sits, and then describe the key features of the agreement, and then I'm happy to take questions. So the city and the county have been discussing a convention center expansion, as you all know, for a number of years before talks stalled around 2020. Those discussions involve questions of location, design, scope, and related amenities like a hotel or garage. Last year, the city and the county expressed interest in renewing pursuit of an expanded convention center. While the administration and the commissioners disagreed over the best structure to manage design and construction, all agreed that if a capital improvement board were created for this purpose, an interlocal agreement would be needed to address respective contributions and activities of the city and county to accomplish that work. So in July, as I mentioned earlier, the commissioners created the Capital Improvement Board to manage the current and the expanded convention center. Members have been appointed by both the executives and the councils, including yourself. As I mentioned, President Whiteheart is here. They selected their seventh member, Jim Silberstein, at the meeting last Wednesday of the CIB. Since the summer, the city and the county have been negotiating the interlocal agreement that you have before you, which sets out the respective city and county contributions and involvement in the project. The interlocal requires approval by the city and county executives and the councils, since all are involved with the resources and the activities that this agreement covers. Mayor Hamilton did sign this today. Briefly, the agreement contemplates that the CIB will manage the design, construction, and at a high level, the operation of the expanded convention center, and ultimately, the, obviously, the existing convention center as that is merged into the big expanded convention center. The agreement reflects the party's desire to leave the design and construction of this to the CIB, whose members reflect experience and expertise in large capital projects. Design and construction will be funded through debt issued by a city-created building corporation, like the county did for the original convention center, with the debt paid by the city as lessy of that expansion using food and beverage tax revenue. So the building corporation would own the expansion and the property it sits on, as it needs to do as the debt issuer, it needs to hold on to that, until the debt is paid off. It needs it as collateral. The city would lease the expansion, and while the debt is being paid off, it would pay lease payments with food and beverage revenue, and the debt would be paid off in that way. Because the city funds, a city's food and beverage funds are going to be what is used to fund the design and construction. The CIB, as you see in the agreement, will really be working with city council with respect to getting approval for the use of funds for design and construction. Okay? So only if the county provides county funds specifically during that period would the county be involved in approval of its own funds for that purpose. But the idea here was obviously to have the folks whose money is being used be involved in approval of that use. Okay? After construction is completed, annually, the CIB and the CVC budgets would be reviewed and approved by both councils. Okay? And that is one of the ways in which the county and the city have saw collaboration going forward with respect to the management and operation of the expanded convention center. After the construction is complete, the way this would work is the CIB, this contemplates the CIB taking over again at a high level, operation and management of the expanded facility. There'd be an agreement for that with the city, and the CIB will also step into the shoes of the county at that point with respect to its contract with the CVC. There are a lot of entities here. There are a lot of acronyms. I apologize, but it is what it is. The agreement contemplates that the CIB will make use of the work already done with respect to location, scope, and design. That happened before things stalled. And in fact, they have a meeting in December at which Schmidt Associates, which is the architect that had done previous work, will be making a presentation to the CIB. The CIB will, this contemplates the CIB would ask the parties, ask the city and county for real property assets needed in its view to go ahead and construct the expansion, and that the parties will negotiate in good faith with respect to those asks. Once the debt is paid off, the building corporation will transfer the expansion to the city, and then the city would go ahead and transfer that to the CIB. So that's the, at a high level, those are the basic main terms of this. There are a few more. There, does that mean maybe the?
Might be the audio is fixed, but.
That may have been the result of some efforts to fix our issues going on in the control room. Apologies.
Okay, no worries. No, okay, no, that's good. That was very sort of '70 psychedelic there for a minute, actually. But flashbacks. But anyway, there are some other terms in here. For example, the CIB would go ahead and be able to name the expanded convention center, but if it were going to sell those naming rights, that would require city and county approval, for example. So with that, let me stop there. Again, happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Questions from council? Councilmember Smith?
Thanks for going through that with us. I see there was a, there was a recent change, you know, that revised interlocal agreement was distributed. Will you just say something about that?
I will. Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Smith. So that was just literally a typo. So in the part of the agreement that talks about how CVC appointments will be made, that again is an area of collaboration between the city and the county, and the city council will provide recommendations for the county council's appointments, and needs to do that before November 1st. And then it says before November 1st,[1746.17] And then it says before November 1st, earlier in that paragraph correctly, and then there was by November 1st for the county council's list of recommendations on the unrestricted CVC appointment. That should say before as well, so that it syncs and is not internally inconsistent. So that was, it's just correcting that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. Yeah. Thanks for reminding me.
Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kate. And thank you to the legal department and the county as well. Is it Jeff?
Jeff Cockrell. Yeah, to Jeff and Penny Givens, who've been negotiating this with us for, yeah.
Yes, thank you to everybody. I know it was a kind of long negotiation, and I know it took a lot of time, so I appreciate that. I wanted to ask, the city building corporation that is to be formed, is that, do we already have such a thing?
We have CBCI, but we're not contemplating that they would be the entity involved here. They're pretty covered up with Hopewell, is my understanding. And so I think our contemplation is we would create basically the equivalent of the county's building corporation to issue this debt. That would effectively be what it's doing, and so it would be separate.
Okay. So it was my understanding at some point in my city career that there was a building corporation, for example, that owned City Hall, but this is going to be a new thing?
This is a new thing. And I don't know if the, oh gosh, the municipal, Bloomington Municipal Finance, I wish Larry Allen were here. I don't know if that's what you're thinking about, or something else. But no, this would be a new thing, and it'd be a single-purpose thing.
Okay. And related to that, so I'm trying to understand the sequence of ownership. So the city building corporation is going to be the owner of the expanded convention center?
Right.
And then the city will be the lessie? So we'll lease it?
That's right. Because the building corporation owns it, as the debt issuer, it's going to be collateral for that debt, they lease it to us, we pay with food and beverage tax, like innkeeper's tax is used by the county now to pay its lease payments on the current convention center.
But then how can the city of Bloomington give ownership to the CIB?
That will only happen once the debt is paid off.
I'm sorry?
That will only happen once the debt is paid off. That'll be 20 years from now.
I see. Okay.
We'll all still be here.
All right. Thank you.
Cue that 70s sound.
Additional questions? Councilmember Volin.
All right. Just to make me feel assured, is this agreement sufficient for us to eliminate the concern that our friends at the State House had that might have led them to rethink the food and beverage tax?
I think if, if what you're asking, Councilmember Volin, is will this be an indicator of collaboration between the city and the county, and an indicator that we are serious about pursuing the expanded convention center and using the money for that purpose, I think the answer is yes. And I think it's not just this agreement, but I think it is also, you know, the fact that there's movement now, that the CIB has met a couple of times, that we have had conversations about next steps and using funds that were in the city's 2024 budget toward certain expenditures that will support the CIB operations, what we're going to do with Schmidt, next steps. So, yes, I do.
Just to be clear, we have allocated money in the 2024 budget so as to further the cause of a convention center. This agreement finally lays to rest that this is the completed negotiation between the city and county and any other entities involved to get a move on.
I believe so. Yes. I mean, that's, yes. I think that we have negotiated all with the goal of exactly what you just mentioned, with the goal of exactly that, that we are going to reach a collaborative approach to moving forward, and that's what this agreement will allow us to do.
If we approve this agreement tonight, will the next meeting on December 13th of the CBCI be executing contracts that early? I mean, are there any, I mean, are they, will money be spent by the CBC, no, sorry, the CIB? The CIB? I'm confused.
No, like I said, there are a lot of.
The CIB as early as, you know, the next meeting in December, are they ready to start executing?
So to start executing on what in particular?
Anything that shows that we're spending money towards the goal of building a convention center.
Yes. I, I mean, let me put it this way. I think that what we need to do, when you mentioned the legislation earlier, so the State House passed legislation this last term, and it had certain requirements. One of those requirements is that the city and the county both file reports with the state and adopt those reports before December 1st. So I have a draft of ours, I'm sure that Jeff is working on the county's, that will reflect how we plan to spend food and beverage funds for 2024. And so that, that money can't be spent before 2024. But in terms of the steps to prepare, for example, the CIB has engaged an attorney already, that's Jim Whitlatch. I've already had a conversation with him about entering into an agreement with the CIB to be able to use the money that this council appropriated to pay some of the CIB operating costs, et cetera.
In the prior year, like?
In, in 2024, but they could get started on that. He'll probably build for 2024. And so I think there's, yeah, there's movement. Yes.
In other words, we have money in the food and beverage tax account, but we've only appropriated, we haven't really appropriated any money yet, except what we've appropriated to, for what you've contemplated in 2024?
Well, yes, except that you appropriated earlier money with respect to the city's retention of Schmidt, and that money still remains out there and can still be used. So, yes, and there are plans for that too. So, yeah.
I just, I just don't, I'm worried that something's going to come back and bite us in the butt, you know, like something we didn't think of, or something. There's, there's no outstanding disputes, I just want to be reassured that we've sort of resolved all the issues?
I, I believe so. I think that we will know that for sure, when, you know, you all approve this. I mean, that's part of what you're doing here tonight. And then the county council and county commissioners will take up this agreement, as I understand it, after Thanksgiving. So I think the Tuesday and Wednesday after Thanksgiving.
So we're not the last stop?
You're not the last stop. But you're an important stop, obviously.
Appreciate that.
So hopefully, all, everyone will be signing and joining hands and moving forward in a productive, collaborative way, and that's what we're hoping for.
Thanks very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Additional round one questions? Councilmember Rollin.
Thank you, Ms. Kate, for your presentation. I'm wondering about the CIB, the budget is reviewed by the city council, how often does that occur? And the review of the CIB's budget?
For, by this body?
By this body, yes.
Okay. So I think the, what's contemplated here is that when there is an expenditure of funds or a commitment of food and beverage funds or other city funds, then the CIB would be coming to the city council for approval of that. Now, with a bond issue that is going to be obviously an enormous user of food and beverage funds, then I think that that's going to be one sort of approval of a lot of food and beverage. And so I don't know that at that, you know, you'll be looking at that point at what the CIB is bringing you in terms of, we need this much bond money for this type of design, et cetera. And in that context, you're going to be seeing things like, what's the design, what's the location, what's the scope, et cetera. After that, I wouldn't expect that, just like with any other bond, you know, approval, you're not going to be looking at the individual expenditures of bond payments on, you know. But, but if there's other money that, you know, is either sort of cash in the F and B account that is separate from money that may be called on to pay off the debt, then they'll be back to you for approval of that.
I see. So any kind of appropriations or bond approval, they come to us?
That's right. And then after the construction is complete, the agreement contemplates both for the CIB and the CVC, that there would be collaborative review and development and approval by the two councils of annual budgets for operation and maintenance. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Additional round one questions? Okay, round two. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I'd like to know about the, sorry, I'm trying to find my question here in the document. Okay, so in section four, for both section A about CIB and section B about the CVC, at the bottom, or at least, let's see, it's at the bottom of page six of the agreement. So, large letter A, small letter C. If the councils cannot agree on a budget by December 1st, the budget for the then-current year shall be the budget for the succeeding year. December 1st is after the general deadline for both the county and the city to report their budget to the state. So I'm wondering why that December 1st deadline is given. I mean, usually, we have to have our budgets approved by the end of October.
You know, let me think about that. Those were dates that I believe the county provided earlier, so, and I think probably reflects a little bit more of what they were anticipating, but, hmm, so if.
So wouldn't we be approving CIB funding as part of our general budget approvals? Or would it be a separate process?
I'm sorry?
Would, I mean, if, if the CIB and CVC budgets are going to be approved in our regular budget process, then that would have to be concluded before the end of October, not December 1st. So I'm concerned that the December 1st.
This does arise in terms of post-design and construction. And so one issue is how much of this money is going to be for that phase of operations is going to be city money versus county money? That's one question. There may be some, but the vast majority of the city's money in this project is going to be in the design and construction phase with respect to the bond issue, and that's what we're pledging our food and beverage tax funds. So certainly for the CVC, for example, they operate with innkeeper's tax money right now, and they go before the county council, this is sharing with the city council, the ability to weigh in on something, effectively a project that the city has, has kind of paid for the development of, and then to make sure that it continues to be managed appropriately going down the road. So let me, I want to think about that, whether there's a problem with that date, but I think part of it, from, from the city's standpoint, I'm wondering how much impact it will have on the city's budgetary process, because I don't know how much of city funding ongoing is going to be involved in the maintenance of the convention center. It isn't now. So it's really, I think, I think of these as mechanisms as much to ensure that ongoing operations of something the city has made a massive investment in is something that you continue to have a voice in. So.
Oh, yeah. I don't disagree with that. I'm just wondering about these dates. I mean, it seems to me the county council also approves their budget in October. So I, if Jeff Cockrell is okay with it, I, it's a little concerning to me.
Additional comments or additional questions? Okay?
Oh, I, if nobody else has one, I have another question. So it was a little curious, I saw in here, so this is at the bottom of page four, Article Three, Section One, Letter B. The very bottom, it says, "The parties agree that the county properties located south of West Third Street and east of South College Avenue shall not become available for use prior to the conclusion of the 2024 election cycle." Can you explain why that's in there?
That has been in there from the beginning. It's something that the county required in order to make sure that everyone understood that that property was going to continue to be available for use. Depending on the timing of this, I mean, I think it's just taken a while to get to here, so obviously, the most recent election activities are over now, but their concern was to make sure that they wouldn't be asked to commit that property toward anything before it was able to be put to that use, that election-based use. That's why it's there.
Wait, I don't, I don't understand how, what you just said jives with what the languages that I read. So they agree that those properties shall not become available for use?
Right. That, I mean.
So they're, so next year.
But then it will be available. It will be available after that election cycle is over, which it effectively is, right? So this is, again, this has taken a while. It's taken a while to get here.
Well, no, it's next year's election, right? It's next year's election, 2024.
Yeah. Yes. But, so what?
I mean, I'm not, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't understand it, because even, are they trying to say that, that people who, in the county government, who may not be reelected next November, should not have a say in this? Because then they could still have a say after November.
No, 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 no. It's not, this is literally about the property use. They're basically saying, we don't want anyone putting shovels. If this is the property that is used for any part of the convention center expansion project, then as I understand it, what they, what they're saying is, we don't want that property to be disturbed, we want it available for the use to which it has been put, for voting purposes. That's all that we've ever heard on this issue. It's not about, that, that's what it's about.
That's where the early voting center is, where the election central is.
Right. That's, sorry, I was assuming I get, yeah, that's what it's about. It's just, and again, this was, that was in, from the beginning, because generally, what we were looking at is what properties are available that might be contributed by the different parties, and they were saying, yes, but we don't want to have to kick this in before it would be used as a vote center for this purpose. So.
Okay.
That's what it's there for.
I didn't compute what that location was.
That's why we're here tonight, to answer questions.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment then on Resolution 2322. May I have a show of hands here in chambers of those who would like to offer comment? One? I see one. Mr. Lucas, how are we doing with audio?
It's still a work in progress. I'm sorry, I don't believe it's fixed at the moment.
Okay.
That changes, I will let you know.
Yeah. Could you at least extend an invitation for people to enter and chat, so, and if you'd like to approach?
Yes, happily. If there are folks that want to comment on this item and can send a message via chat, we would be happy to read that out loud here at the meeting.
Okay. So let's begin here in chambers, while those are accumulating. If you would, please share your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening again, council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. What a long, strange trip it's been on this convention center. I want to thank the council for their work in creating the CIB, their commitment to the upgrade expansion of the convention center. I think I just had a couple of questions, sort of looking at this language. Has the county made a commitment to agree to the language as currently written? This is a county asset, and it would be imperative that they are on board, and as I, as I, I think, council, Kate mentioned, I don't think they have signed it yet. We're having audio difficulty tonight. We're down a council member. I would say punt this and put off the vote until your next, next session, and hopefully we can have everyone present, we can have the, the audio, or we can have full engagement with both the public virtually and any council member. I thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Either here in chambers or, Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any messages on Zoom?
No, I don't see any written comments.
Okay. Seeing none, let's come back to council.
I, I do apologize, I received one. This is from Kate Wilts, who says, "I would like to say that I appreciate the collaboration that has gone into this interlocal agreement, most recently Councilmembers Scamblerie and Piedmont Smith. The county council will have this item on its November 28th meeting agenda."
Thank you, Councilmember Wilts. Anything additional on Zoom?
Not that I see on this item.
Okay. Let's come back, Councilmember Volin.
Yeah, I just finally have an opportunity to weigh in on the thing that I think I, for one, have been waiting for, for, for my entire time in this seat, my entire 20 years in this council. We've been talking. We've been talking about a convention center expansion. In the past eight years, we've been moving towards it. There's been active discussions about it, but they've been fraught with difficulty and acrimony. That if I think about it for more than a minute, I find inexplicable. It shouldn't have been this hard to get to this point. I think that both the mayor and the commissioners have been very stubborn, I'm being polite. Been very stubborn, then they've been fighting each other tooth and nail. This was true back in 2019, when it looked like there was real movement towards coming to an agreement that the pandemic made everything worse. I still don't blame anybody for the pandemic, or the delays that it might have caused, or the pauses it gave everyone to think about it. But it doesn't really matter because this still took much too long. Having said that, we finally have a deal on the table. And there's certain people in the room or online who've been involved with that. I say kudos to all of them. I trust that the people who need to sign this agreement will, and that we're finally going to expand the convention center that we've needed to expand for a long time. Bloomington is and always has been the second most popular destination in the state after Indianapolis. But we haven't had a convention center that has lived up to that demand. There's demand for people to visit here. This is a desirable place, this has always been a desirable place to visit. I am encouraged by the makeup of the CIB. I think it's important that there's a representative of IU on the CIB, because I know that they are planning to be an active user of the new convention center. But I look at the food and beverage tax data every month when it comes out. It's a fantastic indicator of the health of the restaurant industry in Monroe County. And up until this year, it's been, I mean, the, the growth back after the pandemic has been gangbusters. We have a very healthy restaurant sector here. And it's about time that this money that we've been reserving for more than five years for the purpose of improving the economy in the, in the city and the county actually gets put to use. So I am grateful that a agreement exists. I still find it very difficult to accept that it took as long as it did to negotiate. I am actually grateful, let me, let me put it this way, to the columnar heads in the room who said, "Let's get a deal done," rather than those who are posturing to say, "Well, it's got to be done my way or not at all." So I am, with all due respect to Mr. MG's comment about how it would be nice to have more input if the audio was working, I think we need to move on with it. It's time to get this deal done and to start using the food and beverage tax for what it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I think this is a very important step for the county and the city. And not just because of the convention center and the, the purpose of the food and beverage tax need to actually come to fruition, but also because it, it shows that we can collaborate. It may take us a while, it may be difficult, but we can collaborate, and we will be collaborating into the future. So in particular, I'm pleased to see that as part of the agreement, it says, "We are going to take the work done previously on deciding on a site and possible architecture into account as the expansion moves forward." It would be a shame to, to throw that out the window. We had come quite a ways by January of 2020, before the pandemic kind of put a hold on everything. And so I think that those, those studies should be used, of course, updated, but, but still referred to. That was also, you know, an expense that we undertook with getting those consultants in. And I'm also very pleased to see that the agreement specifically notes that there's a commitment to a sustainable building and environmentally friendly practices in the expanded convention center. So I'm very pleased about those two items in particular. Now, as to an expansion of the convention center in general, I have never been the biggest fan, because it's, it's really, you know, in the, the present transportation environment, people are going to drive here. And it's, so it's a drive of gas-powered vehicles. And so it is a, it, it's an impact on our carbon footprint and, and encouraging more people to drive. And we have certainly functioned, not counting tonight, but in general, pretty well, using Zoom for such conferences. But there was a commitment made when the county council passed the food and beverage tax to use it for this purpose. And therefore, I think we need to follow through and use it for this purpose and just make sure that we, we keep investing in transportation options and, and make the, the expanded center as, as sustainable and green as possible. So I, I do have a little bit of hesitancy because of this December 1st question, but I will trust that the lawyers have vetted this. Ms. Kate is approaching the microphone. President Scamblerie, could, would you mind if we...
Not at all.
Okay.
Just on the December 1st question, I mean, the other thing, just to keep in mind on that, is the default position here is that there will be a budget. It will simply be the budget for the preceding year. In other words, it's not that there wouldn't be funding appropriated. So there would be funding, it would simply default. And it kind of gives time, so even if it's December 1 and that's passed, we have end-of-year appropriations and adjustments that can get made here. I assume the county can do the same if something changed. So if something really, this is not contemplating that it will happen on December 1. It's literally contemplating that if it doesn't get resolved, if there's a, some kind of disagreement, then there will simply be the default back to the existing budget. So perhaps by budget time, if there's no agreement reached, you're on the existing budget and you keep negotiating until, until December 1. That's a possibility. Anyway, I don't know if that helped or clouded things more, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't let it hold up a vote on this. If there is something problematic with that, we may be able to come and just deal with that. But the intention here is to make sure that there is collaboration between the city council and the county council on budgetary processes and to work it out.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you. I, I think I'm finished with my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional final comments? Councilmember Rallo.
Interesting to hear, my colleagues. This has been a long time coming. We've gone through pandemic, we've gone, we've had technological upgrades in terms of, that call into question whether or not in near future such space would be obviated, the need would be obviated by technology. And then good arguments come that, no, actually, people do need to, to convene and meet and, and have, and go to conventions at times. And it was also, there was a matter, when this was brought to the council years ago, that this would also consist of a civic center, that it wouldn't be just a convention center, that it would be utilized and by and for the community for purposes locally. I still hope that that's the case. I, I agree that, that, you know, we are far more than midstream in, in, in this process at this point. And so I'll be supporting this, but I would make an appeal to the governing board. And actually, it was Mick Renison, who was, who essentially promoted the idea to the council at the time of a civic center. And that's still my hope. So I hope the governing board is, and, and all the entities would be pushing for that as a, as a significant use for the facility. And, and I will, I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional final comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I, I just wanted to mention that in the last, Article 4, Section 5, does say general intention to use, use this as a civic center as well as convention space. So just to respond to Councilmember Rallo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional final comments? If not, I'll finish up. I'm very, very happy to support this. I'm very pleased to see this project moving forward. And I look forward to the leadership of the CIB. I just especially want to acknowledge my county colleagues, Councilmember Kate, Councilmember Kate Wilts, Councilmember Trent Deckard, and all the members of, of council who invested their time and energy in thinking through this and coming to this point. So I, I, it is a pleasure and a privilege to work, to have worked with you on this. So with that, we come to a vote. Deputy Clerk McDowell, if you would, please call the roll on Resolution 2322.
Councilmembers Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims? Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volan?
At last, yes.
Thank you.
And that passes at last, 8-0. So thank you, everyone. And that takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2329 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the clerk, deputy clerk, please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Sims? Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
And Scamblerie?
Yes. And that passes, if you would, please read.
"Ordinance 23-29, An Ordinance Authorizing the Acquisition, Construction, and Installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana, of Certain Extensions and Improvements to the City Sewage Works Utility, the Issuance and Sale of Revenue Bonds to Provide Funds for the Payment of the Costs thereof, and the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of the Revenues of Such Sewage Works and Other Related Matters." The synopsis is, "This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its sewage works revenue bonds of 2024 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $55 million. The 2024 bonds will be issued to finance the second phase of modernizing the Dillman Road WWTP, the Blucher Pool Wastewater Treatment Plant, the Collection System Project, other projects, and to pay costs of issuance of the bonds."
Thank you very much. We will take this up next at our regular session on December 6th.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2330 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
And Sims.
I actually heard that. That's actually, that passes. Would the deputy clerk please read?
"Ordinance 23-30, An Ordinance Concerning the Construction of Additions and Improvements to the Waterworks of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, the Issuance of Revenue Bonds to Provide the Costs thereof, the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of the Revenues of Said Waterworks, the Safeguarding of the Interests of the Owners of Said Revenue Bonds, other matters connected therewith, including the Issuance of Notes in anticipation of Bonds and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith." The synopsis is, "This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its waterworks revenue bonds of 2024 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $95,000 through a forgivable loan program with the Indiana Finance Authority. The 2024 bonds will be issued to finance water pipe-related inventory and pay costs of issuance of the bonds."
Thank you. And likewise, we will take up Ordinance 2330 at our regular session on December 6th. This brings us to our second of two periods of public comment. If there is anyone in chambers who would like to offer public comment, please start approaching the podium. Mr. Lucas, could you extend whatever appropriate invitation we have on Zoom?
Yes, I, I've just messaged our Zoom attendees. Unfortunately, we're still experiencing audio difficulties. If there are folks who would like to offer comments and can send those in written form to the meeting host, we would be happy to read those out loud for you.
And again, our apologies for the audio snags this evening. So let's begin here in chambers. If you would, please sign in. And if you would, share your name for the record, please. And then you'll have five minutes.
My name is Adam Martinez. Initially, I didn't plan on speaking, but due to an earlier public comment, I thought it'd be good to extend my support for traffic calming measures. A little, is it better? Okay. So I said I would like to extend my support for traffic calming measures. So I'm sure you know, the goal of traffic calming is slowing cars down. And that could be done through narrower streets, speed bumps, things like that. When cars go slower, that leads to less noise, which is great for everyone. It also makes biking safer. And the safer that biking is, the more people that will bike. More people biking, less people in cars, less cars, less pollution, less traffic, and less frequent road maintenance. So that's pretty much all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, please go ahead, if you would, sign in. And then share your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
My name is Mark Combs. I'm a new resident here. I've been here five months. I've, I don't know if I love this town, but I like it so much already. The best part about it is the neighborhood I live in, the, my neighbors, just awesome people. And so I look for good things going forward. But I'm here, I'm standing here today to talk about the same pond that Mr. Arnold talked about. I, I was involved in kind of seeing that whole thing start up from, "We smell something, but there is a sewer line over there, that's probably what it is. But now the ground's wet, now it's percolating, now it's flowing out." And you see the water flowing over and into the drain, and it goes directly to the pond. That's what we had in our neighborhood. I, I saw that as a public health emergency. The initial call was made on the night of February, November 5th, which was a Sunday night, left a voicemail, and someone from wastewater came out Monday morning. He was there about 20 minutes. I had the opportunity to speak with him a few days later. He said, "I didn't smell anything." He went away. And, and then Wednesday night, I was walking my dog, and that's when I saw the water coming up out of the ground and into the drain. I called, and immediate response, they were out there Thursday. That's great, I like eight pieces of equipment, nine men. It was good response. But then, that's it. There's no, nothing about the situation itself, about the pond with a sewage and a dead fish. And so testing's going to be done, but this is Thursday, tomorrow's a holiday, so testing won't be done until Monday. So in the meantime, now we're a week out from when it was first reported, still hasn't been tested. And so the testing was done on Monday. We got the results back today, and surprise, there's E. coli there, okay? But in the meantime, this is our neighborhood. Kids play there, kids fish there. I put up a sign, "No fishing, sewage and water, dead fish." And Saturday, I saw a kid fishing there, you know? These are our kids. We're talking about a public health emergency. I was really disappointed in the response. And Congressman, Congressman, wow, you just got a promotion, Mr. Councilman Volan. I'm going to repeat something that you said just a moment ago. It shouldn't have been this hard to get to this point. And so now it's tested, we know we have a problem. Water is being pumped out, but they estimate there's 200,000 gallons in this pond. There's one truck, 4,500-gallon truck. So he has to pump it out, take it down to Dillman, come back, take another one. If he does eight a day, it's going to take seven days. It's another... It's another week before the pond's cleaned out, okay? And then, what do you do with the soil? The soil's contaminated. It shouldn't be this hard to get to this point. So I don't know that I'm asking what to do. I mean, I, I'm a new resident. I'm bouncing around, trying to find out who to talk to, that kind of thing. And I've learned a lot about this city through that. This fella here talked about Resident Academy. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but I think I have an idea. I think that's something I might want to look into. So I guess I'm here tonight that, you know, if this was happening in your neighborhood, you would be absolutely as concerned as I am. And I'm not sure where we go from here to get somebody to recognize a sense of urgency. Maybe we need to get a second truck, or even a third truck, and get this thing going before it, before it gets worse. I mean, it's, it continues to be contaminated. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Combs. Are there any, is there any additional comment here in chambers? Seeing none. Mr. Lucas, anything on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
Okay. That'll conclude our second of two periods of public comment then, so let's take up matters of council schedule.
Yes, just one item I wanted to mention. I know Councilmember, Council President Scamblerie has expressed interest, as have a few other council members, in holding a work session on December 4th for the purpose of discussing the Showers West expansion project with members of the administration and the architects. If the council would like to schedule that meeting, you can do so tonight. We, we've preemptively reserved the McCloskey Conference Room for that, so if a member would like to make a motion for that, that meeting, that would be appropriate.
That we hold a work session on Monday, December 4th, at noon in the McCloskey Room for the purpose of the discussion, question, and answers on the status of Showers West.
Certainly.
It's been moved and seconded. May I invite the deputy clerk to call the roll, please?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Scamblerie?
Yes.
Sims? And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes 8-0, so we will have a work session on Monday, December 4th, at noon in the McCloskey Room. Thank you, everyone. Anything else on council schedule?
No, thank you. The next regular session will be December 6th, so happy, happy holidays.
Indeed. So is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Seeing nothing further, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.